Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand and twenty five, Tingsboro School Committee Meeting. My name is Mike Flanagan, Superintendent of Schools, and I call this meeting to order. Remind that these meetings are audio and video recorded. At this time, we'll begin with introductions to my far left.
Cameron Times.
Becky Stanton.
Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Anthony Tenell.
Daniela Thanos.
Ryan McMahon.
Stacy Guido.
Rob Mullen.
Joe Fusina, Business Administrator.
At this time, we'll stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. This is our annual reorganization meeting. So the first order of business that we need to accomplish is to elect a new chair for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So at this time, I'll seek a nomination for a chair.
I'll nominate Ryan McMahon.
I'll second that.
We have a nomination and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries seven, zero. At this time, I'll seek a nomination for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Rob Mullen.
I'll second.
Have a nomination and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Seven, zero. At this time... Six, one. At this time, I will seek a nomination for Recording Secretary.
I'll nominate Daniela Thanos.
Second? Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, zero. I'm so bad at this. I apologize. Not my real house right here. At this time, I'll seek a nomination for a three-minute recess.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries. We're in recess now. Three minutes.
All right. Welcome back to our meeting. We're going to seek a new nomination for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Rebecca.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Passes seven, zeros, zero. Congratulations. Okay. Two D. So there's a series of documentation we need to review. There's the Open Meeting Law Guide, email, telephone correspondence. It's in the drive. Executive Session Guidelines contained in the Open Meeting Law Guide dated January twenty eighteen. The role of the School Committee and the preliminary discussion of School Committee. Oh, sorry. Hold on to that. So those first documents are in the drive for a review. So please review those. Two G, Preliminary Discussion of School Committee Subcommittees.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As we've done in the past, I typically encourage the committee to read the subcommittee descriptions that are available in the drive and try to sign on to two or three that you'd be interested in serving on for the next upcoming year. What we'll do at this time, though, because we will not meet again until August, we will keep everyone in their current role. So we have Rob and Bert as the single signers. If anything were to come up for capital asset, Tony and Ryan are the representatives for that. And we'll just kind of keep that status quo until the August meeting when we make those recommendations. I would just ask that you get something to me in the next couple of weeks of your top two or three choices. And again, we'll try to disperse it as evenly as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will seek a motion to approve the May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five School Committee Minutes and the May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five Executive Session Minutes. The Executive Session Minutes not to be released at this time.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries seven, zero. Citizen time? See none. Correspondents?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Personnel? I will leave this to you, Dr. Flanagan.
Okay. So a notification of resignation. Mr. Tucker from TM Middle School, eleven years of service. Thank you, Mr. Tucker, for your service. Notification of new hires for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. We have Kristen Coretta at TES Power Professional, Adam Constantino, TMS THS Band Teacher, Satyla Dua, TES Power Professional, Jason Faulkner, TMS Custodian, Morgan Galan, TES Classroom Teacher, Julia Masada, TES Integrated Preschool Teacher, Tricia Materazzo, TES Power Professional, Julia McCoy, TES Classroom Teacher, Ethan Parker, TMS Science Teacher, Jack Richardson, TES Second Shift Custodian, Lucas Ross, TMS THS Theater Teacher, and Ann Walt, TES Power Professional. Those are our new hires. Continuing down, Mr. Chair, staff attaining professional status. We have Bethany Shudo, Nicole Bernard, Taylor Morash, Vincent Papa Giorgio, Evan Hermanson, Erin Rubito, and Erica Guerrero. Additionally, continuing down, staff renewals who do not yet have professional teaching status are Emma Colabro, Jenna Carteline, Holly Connolly, Cody Face, Vanda Foster, Jasmine Grahamer, Michaela Merxmer, Caitlin Lawrence, Sydney O'Neil, Ashley Pergan, Kyle Pratt, and Samantha Roy. And that is all the staffing we have at this point.
Thank you. Share the success. Cameron?
All right. For the elementary school, as we wrap up the end of the twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we are so impressed by the incredible learning, growth, and social, emotional development we've witnessed in our students. This year has been a tremendous success. This week, we look forward to celebrating our fifth grades with a week of fun activities planned. It's a wonderful opportunity to honor their accomplishments and prepare them for the exciting transition to the new middle school, which they are so excited about. Our move-up day is scheduled for Friday, June thirteenth. We'll also wrap up the year with our annual barbecue, the PTO's first annual color run, and music, of course, with DJ Steve. For the middle school, all three grades went on an end-of-the-year field trip this year. On Thursday, we are having our annual Field Day, as well as the eighth-grade dance from six to eight. The moving on ceremony takes place from six to seven this Friday. Last Wednesday, there was a meeting for fifth-grade parents with the middle school administration. Teachers are also getting excited about the move to the middle school as the crates for moving arrived on Monday. A lot of congratulations for the high schoolers. Congratulations to the class of two thousand and twenty-five, as this past Friday graduation was held. It was a great night, and we are extremely proud of all our graduates and with them the best. Congratulations to the June Students of the Month. Hopefully, I'm saying all these right. Sedona Federson, Amelia Johnson, Joseph Malick, and Hadassah Oliid. This week, students in grades nine through eleven will be recognized during win at the Celebration of Excellence. This includes academic awards, as well as other awards such as core values, commitment to learning, and others. Congratulations to sophomores Miley Preventure and Koby Times for attending HOBE, a youth leadership organization at Bentley University last weekend. Congratulations to the softball team, as they have reached the MIA Division Four State Tournament Final Four. They take on Uptbridge in the state semifinals tomorrow at four P. M. at Worcester State. Good luck, girls. Thank you to everyone that came out for the annual Tiger Pride five K Trail Run. Your support is greatly appreciated. And finally, thank you to students, family, and staff for a great year. We hope you all have an amazing summer. That's all I got.
Nice job.
Thank you.
I know. Pretty good for a first one.
Thanks.
All right. Subcommittee update? None at this time? Unfinished business? MSBA update?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We'll jump right into the slide deck. Just a reminder about upcoming meetings. June twenty-fifth is our next School Building Committee meeting. There is no School Building Committee meeting scheduled for July, and then we get back at our School Committee meetings in August, August fifth. So we'll go to the first slide. Just a reminder about the move calendar for the summer. Will be a very busy summer here. As Cameron just alluded to, the crates have arrived, and the dollies in the crates have arrived. And they're dispersed throughout the middle school right now, so the staff at the middle school is actively packing their classrooms up. We've actually cut off the copiers and some of the technology at the middle school at this point as we get ready for the transition, which all has to happen on the same date. So busy, busy summer for us here, but we're really excited about the progress that's ongoing. As we go to the next slide, just a reminder, this will be, and actually, I'm going to edit this slide a little bit. This will be the access that we have for the campus this summer, in and out through the current entrance of Norris Road. But that actual line, the red line, is going to come down to where the green is. We will not have the bus loop either. We're going to give the bus loop to Fontaine as well. So it'll be one-way traffic in and out for the bulk of the summer while they do all of the mill and pave and all the work that needs to be done for our parking areas. But if you had the opportunity to look at the cement work in Tiger Plaza, it's coming along fabulously right now, and they're making a lot of progress, and it looks great. And that green line right there, we have six new trees already planted out front, and there are new lights up there as well. So really, a lot of progress is happening. Let's go to the next slide. Just some of the update that's going on. The furniture assembly and installation has been ongoing. The gym floor, I want to edit that. It's actually like two-thirds complete at this point. That'll be completed at the end of June, at which point they'll come in and take about a week to put all the bleacher system in. Then they'll put the graphics on the wall. The elevator has passed inspection, and right now it's operational, and they're using it to move the furniture and disperse the furniture throughout the school. Staging cal flooring, that's the only part, if you walked in right now, you'd say this is still a construction area. Staging cal flooring is going to take a little bit of time because we were waiting for the finished stairs to come in at the heart of the school, and I have a picture of that for you. The heart of the school rail system can't go in until the stairs are in as well. So those stairs have just gotten placed. They're finishing some soffit work above it right now, and then they'll install the rail system. So a couple of pictures for you right here. That's the gym floor going in right now. It looks great. It's incredible amount of work they're putting into it, but really excited about that. The next picture, you can see the finished stair product is in on the left. We still have temporary rails up on the right. Those won't go in until the stairs are done, the soffit work is done. This is a picture of the really, really nice epoxy flooring in the STEM lab. That's a dual shared space. One's like a CAD room, and one's like an actual workshop room. That's all epoxy flooring down there. And the next picture is just a sort of proof that, yes, furniture is on site, and it's actually being dispersed. That's clearly not all that will be in the classroom neighborhood, all the classroom, but it's starting. So it's really exciting in that sense. And I think that's all I really have for MSBA. Happy to answer any questions if anyone has anything.
I'm just impressed we're able to keep that gym floor straight for that long of a distance.
It's crazy. It's crazy.
I love the furniture. I think the kids are going to love it. They're going to love those chairs. They look like moon chairs to me. Like, they're going to love this. This is so good for them.
It's really exciting to see the furniture get onto the classroom, so looking forward to it.
I know that students were very excited to see the name of the school on the front of the building.
That was true.
Middle school, like, that was a huge step for the kids. They were excited to see it. It was nice for me to check it out when I got here tonight, so very exciting.
Little progress each day. And for those at whom who are concerned, if you look right now in the middle of the concrete plaza, you'll see where the foundation is or the granite is placed for the tiger. The tiger will be put right back there, and that will be forever known as Tiger Plaza going forward. So that's where that is.
Wonderful.
And that's all I have for MSBA.
Thank you. Teaching learning, Mr. Woodlock?
Thank you. So I really wanted to highlight something that happened in the past couple of weeks, and it involves our transition as far as our SDI. A ton of work has been done this year, and we have good results so far. We're not saying we fixed any concerns we may have had, but we've had a really strong year as far as focusing on transitions. And I wanted to kind of give a shout out to our THS counseling staff, Ms. Gustafson, Mrs. Gustafson, and Mrs. Ward. That was part of their own goals, is to aid in that transition for our SDI and do what they could do to make sure it was known what a great school we have here at Tingsboro High School. But to go a little bit further and say, what else can we do to make sure that kids have opportunities here that they do at maybe some other schools? So one of the things they have been, some of the things they've been focused on, we've talked about. They had a junior seminar in February, Junior Parent Night, just to get information out there. They've been doing and organizing a lot of TMS student meetings, run by students for potential eighth graders that would be coming here so that they're informed about what the opportunities are here at Tingsboro High School, what they can expect. Obviously, these are students that are pretty excited about it. And they've been ongoing utilizing Career Cafe, which is bringing in people from different lines of work. Students can sign up to go and meet with them, talk with them during their win block, get a feel for, you know, if that might be something that they want to do. And that often involves a lot of our alumni who come back and share their experiences, which is pretty cool. And so for your access, I shared some slides of a couple of alumni that came this past year that was really successful. So, but one thing they wanted to do this year is they started a junior job shadow day, where pretty much every junior in the entire class participated. So it was voluntary, but everyone, with the exception of just a couple, participated. And they did a lot of work to make sure that businesses would welcome students, at least local businesses. But what they really decided to do is this needs to be a learning experience. So the onus was on the students to make some connections out there, something that they might want to do, that they're considering as a potential career, and contact someone, say, like, I'd like to job shadow. And for some of them, that was someone that they already knew, could be a relative or family member. But for some of them, they went way outside their comfort zone and just reached out and found some people that would say, sure, come in for the day. So again, the aim was exposing students to fields of interest. We had a lot of local participation, which was great, including Tingsboro Public Schools, Tingsboro Fire Department, Tingsboro Police Department. And Ms. Gustafson and Ms. Ward really want to make this an annual event, and they hope that they can bring it even further and maybe create real opportunities for internships for our kids moving forward. So they have a long-term plan, but short-term, this was a really successful first day, providing opportunities for our kids to go out and see what it's like to actually be in a business or work with certain industries. And the feedback they got, which was great, was some kids went and like, that was freaking awesome. And some kids came back and were like, I definitely don't want to do that. Which is so important, right? Like, that's part of, at least in my experience, like, I learned what I didn't like, which was a really important stepping stone to getting to where I want to be in my career. So they sent out these flyers to a lot of local businesses, but it wasn't all about local businesses. We had all around the Commonwealth kids participating in this. So to give you an idea, like, we're literally over a hundred students participating. So this is only just kind of a small sample, but in the public service, I mentioned our local police and fire department, national police, the state police, Lowell police, and science and technology, Teradyne, Pfizer, MITRE. Education, obviously, Tingsboro Public Schools, but also Chumpsford Public Schools, Lowell Public Schools, UMass Lowell, Northern Essex Community College. Kids spent days in classrooms watching people teach or watching them work in the offices and examining that. Health and wellness, a lot of like physical therapy opportunities, a dermatology office, a neurosurgeon, Boston Med Flight, where kids actually got to like learn how to like do a procedure. They didn't actually do it on people, but they learned those. And that's just a handful. So the list is there for you to check out, if you want to check out the whole list. But pretty awesome. And so as part of, you know, our goal is we want to publicize these things. We want people to know what's happening here in Tingsboro Public Schools. So they kind of put a little social media slant on it too and kind of created a contest, like, who can get the most connections or likes by posting, you know, hashtag Junior Job Shadow Day, THS prepares, all those things, or TPS prepares. And this is just a sample of some of the ones that got out there, but there was a lot of traffic about Junior Job Shadow Day, more than they even expected. So great success. I just want, like, we have an amazing counseling department here at Tingsboro High School, dedicated, like, professional, and willing to do the extra work to do what they have to do for the benefit of our kids. So thanks to Mrs. Ward and Mrs. Gustafson for organizing this, and look forward to hearing more about it going forward. I don't know if I can answer questions, but I'd be happy to take any, as I spent a couple hours with them working on this. We're up in committee.
I just want to say that I think this is amazing, the Junior Job Shadow Day, and thank you to Mrs. Gustafson and Mrs. Ward. When I went to school, we didn't have something like this. We, and I don't even know if people still do this, we have Bring Your Daughter to Work Day. I don't know if that's a thing anymore. But you went to work with your parent. Maybe you weren't interested in what they did. But this is amazing that they got to go to all these different places. And like you said, maybe they loved it, and they're like, yeah, that's what I want to do. And maybe, yeah, I don't really like that, and that's important. But this is amazing idea. So thank you to our counselors for setting this up, and I'm glad to see this is something they want to continue to do moving forward.
I should probably point out, this picture in the bottom left, that's not a real person. That's a practice patient. So, yeah, they weren't just getting pictures taken with actual patients.
Mr. Woodlock, if there's a member of the community whose organization wants to participate in this next year, what's their, what steps should they take?
Yeah, they could reach out directly to our counseling department, or if that's a little difficult, just reach out to the main office and they'll connect them. And we'd love to have more participation. It could also promote their business, you know, getting people in there. Maybe, Cam, do you have any insight on this?
On organizations? I did participate. Well, I just went with my dad at the farm, but it was really great anyway. I think getting like hands-on experience rather than like just hearing about it is really helpful. So I loved it, yeah.
Do you think you'll go into the family business?
I don't think so, no.
Great to know, though.
Yeah.
So, yeah, thanks again to everyone that participated.
Excellent. Great job. Nine C, cellphone policy?
You know, kind of a downer. We go from that exciting thing to cellphone policy. Like, I'm sorry about that. But today was, today was my last meeting on Legislative Committee for MASSS, and it was an update on the cellphone policy and kind of the stats where we are around the state. So if we go to the next slide, what I did was I just, I clipped out some of the information for you. All of this information is in your backup drive, as well as additional information with some qualitative analysis. But basically, you know, today was a kind of our bite at the apple in terms of Legislative Committee to say, we saw the recommendation or the draft language from the Attorney General. Here are things that we're concerned about. We want to make sure BYOD is captured in this. I want to make sure that there is a hard and fast deadline on when these are due to DESI by, if there were going to be a cellphone policy. Most importantly, though, we wanted to make sure that it wasn't a one-size-fits-all policy for every school in the state. We want to get or come to a policy that is a Tingsboro-appropriate policy. So the results right here, as we kind of just go through some of these results, the first one speaks to, you know, the number of districts that have a current policy. The second slide here talks about policies at different level. And I think this one's a little misleading because I think it's almost understood that cellphones aren't allowed at elementary schools. Not that they have a specific policy there, but they just kind of tailored where they gear their policy towards. And the next slide, and this is the one I really want to talk about. This is the one where those people that said we may be supporting a cellphone policy was, that was conditional. That was specific to we don't want a one-size-blanket cellphone bell-to-bell policy. We know that on the call today, that Durfee High School and Fall River High School, they have the yonder pouches, and they use those. I think Lowell has yonder pouches or some type of pouch system. So a kid would walk into school, they'd drop their phone into the pouch, the pouch would seal. Then, as they were going through, one of the schools today described metal detectors, there would be like some kind of magnetic thing that would shut the pouch for the entire day. And their phone was to stay on their person their entire day. And at the end of the day, when they went to leave, it was almost like scanning like a QR station, where that would unlock the pouch, and they could take their phone out and leave for the day. I don't see that as appropriate for Tingsboro. I don't think we're anywhere near that. In other places talked about, you know, we have the shoe rack on the back of the door. The kids put it there, and it's up to the teacher's discretion to say, during instructional time, that stays there. And if you go to the bathroom, it still stays there. But during passing time and at lunch, you can have your phones out. That's what other schools did. So we need to really think about what that looks like. So the bulk of why this eighty-five percent isn't a full eighty-five percent is because... So the bulk of why this eighty-five percent isn't a full eighty-five percent is because some of those districts were concerned that it was going to be a blanket pouch system, which I would not have supported. Right now, the new policy, or the new language specifically leaves it up to local control and school committee input, as well as community input, and some discretion at each grade level, as you see fit for your community. So, so that's where the cellphone policy is. And the last, the last slide, just so you know, there's some qualitative feedback in there from districts around this analysis, and I think one-hundred-and-fifty-two districts responded to it. So it's good information you have as we begin this conversation next fall. And again, the deadline, or the new deadline that's being talked about at this point, is that districts will have a policy in place by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. So that gives us four months to figure out what works for us. But that's kind of where the cellphone thing is at this point.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. New business. Superintendent Evaluation. So Dr. Flanagan was presented with his evaluation for the year. That's complete. I will seek a motion to approve the evaluation for Dr. Flanagan for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
I would just like to state, as the chair for the last two years, you're doing an extraordinary job. You are exemplary pretty much across the board, from every one of us, all seven of us unanimously. We're very lucky to have you in our district, and I thank you for everything you do for Tinsborough Public Schools.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries, seven-zero.
Mr. Chair, I can just thank the committee for their confidence in me, and I think that's what it is. And I think, I think part of the reason we're successful here is because we communicate, we talk to each other, we work together, we don't work against each other. And I think it's a collaborative approach in everything we do, and I truly appreciate the support of everyone in this room. And I will say that this evaluation is, to me, is a reflection, direct reflection of the entire central office team, and the administrative team beyond that. You know, certainly, we were in charge of the direction where we go, but the people who get it done are the building principals and the teachers in the classroom. So I take this, I'm humbled by this, I'm so appreciative of this, but, you know, everyone in this, in this district who works really, really hard to do the best they can for our kids, I'm so thankful for everyone in this district, particularly the people I lean on every day in central office. Thank you.
And B, Regular Ed Transportation Service Contract Amendment Number One. Mr. Messina?
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So, the current contract that we have with D-Bus enables the school committee to enact two different one-year options. As part of this contract, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year is option year number one, which is the fourth year of the contract. It's at a rate of four-hundred-and-sixty-eight day, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars per bus per day. And at this point, I would recommend that the school committee enter into that amendment year, and ask the chair to sign any agreements that need to be done.
Thank you. I will seek a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Regular Ed Transportation Service Contract Amendment Number One, of a possible two, with D-Bus service, and to authorize the chair to sign any and all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
How much of it increases that over last year, this current year?
Four percent increase over last year's.
Thanks.
Twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, should that be twenty-five, twenty-six?
It's the amendment to that contract.
To that contract. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries, seven-zero-zero. Finance. Mr. Messina?
Still me. All right. For signing of bills, there were seven bill warrants presented to the school committee tonight. I do have them all back approved. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. For signing of payroll, there were two payrolls since we last visited this. The payroll of June second, as well as the payroll of June ninth, which you may see is not the regular bi-weekly timeframe. That is actually the, what we call the teacher's summer pays. When the school year ends, the teachers have earned all of their monies for the school year, but we spread it out over twenty-six checks and give them five checks when they leave for the, for the summer, essentially being their paychecks for July and August. Hopefully, they budget themselves accordingly. But you may see a very large number when you go into the drive. That represents five teacher payrolls. And those, those amounts are in your drive as well. For the May financial package, in your drive is the three reports that make up the package, the school committee budget at the end of May, the revolving account balances at the end of May, and the student revolving account, account balances at the end of May. We have the June first enrollment, if the chair would like to read.
I would love to.
Okay, thank you.
At the elementary school, we have seven-hundred-and-thirty-one students, the middle school, four-hundred-and-three, the high school, four-hundred-and-ten, twenty-five out-of-district students, for a total of one-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-nine students.
Thank you.
Anything for other?
That's it.
Thank you. School committee discussion. Cam?
I got nothing, really. I didn't know. I thought I was just doing share success. Number twelve was not on my radar. That's all I got.
That's a fair point.
Congratulations to our new offices. Welcome, Cameron.
Thank you.
On the job shadowing, I think it was awesome to see that many students, as well as a number of businesses. That took a while, you know. Dr. Flanagan, thank you. I've kind of watched you for, I hate to say, a number of years, as you came up to the district, you've come and back. You've done an unbelievable job between the middle school, Legislative Committee, just the day-to-day, the staff. Just thank you for all you do for this community. And congratulations to our graduates. Looking forward to the eighth-grade graduation on Friday, and have a good summer, folks. Thank you.
Dr. Flanagan, thank you, Mr. Woodlock, Mr. Messina, Mrs. Lewenzic, Mr. Piper, Mrs. Fairbanks, and all the other staff. We have the most amazing central office. I appreciate how you've built a team that's cohesive and strong and gets it done. So thank you so much for all that you do. You know, there's, there's not enough words to express, like, just how lucky this district is to have this team, and our kids are benefiting from this. So thank you all. Thank you so much. Welcome, Cam.
Thank you.
We're happy that you're here.
Me too.
And just wishing everybody a happy and safe summer.
I'm with Cam. I'm good.
Joe?
Just echo every, all the school committee members to thank the boss for his leadership.
Well said. Thank you.
I just want to say, congratulations to the graduates. I was at the graduation the other night. I always enjoy going to those and seeing the kids graduate, and seeing the video that they do with all the pictures from, you know, growing up and going through the grades. It's always fun to see. I hope everyone has a really nice summer, teachers, the staff, the students. I hope the students enjoy these last few days of school and all the fun activities that I already know some of your teachers have planned for you. Thank you, Dr. Flanagan and central office. It's kind of amazing behind the scenes to see how smoothly everything goes, and I don't know that you always get the praise that you deserve, because we don't see what goes on, but thank you for that. And good luck to the teachers moving to the new middle school. Thank you.
I would, I'll jump on the thank you, Dr. Flanagan, and the central office staff bandwagon. I mean, like Stacy just mentioned, it's always, it's interesting to see the other side of the curtain sitting on this committee that you don't necessarily see out in the community. There is a lot that happens, and if, if, you know, the grandfather clock is the whole district, you guys are the gears that make everything else run. So just thank you for everything that you do. I also want to thank the Tinsborough Police Department for doing Copsicles with the fifth graders today. Report was, it was lots of fun, and Berry Blast Push-Up Pops or something were delicious. So, thank you for TPD for doing that every year. I've had two kids now do it, and it's just such a fun, great activity and way to connect to the community. We truly are lucky to have S.R. Gustafson over the last couple of years, and so just thanks for that. And have a great summer. Be safe.
Congratulations to the class of twenty-twenty-five. Good luck in college, or whatever career you decide to go in. Another great year for our teachers, our staff, our custodians, who probably don't get the recognition that they deserve. Thank you for keeping our facilities clean and neat, and what you're going to do this summer to keep them healthy. Good luck to the students, and I look forward to our opening of the new middle school in August. Thank you.
So eleven-thirty on Friday, there wasn't one chair in the gym set up for graduation. And the amount of work that they put in, and that last-minute push to get that set up for graduation was incredible.